Okay, calling to order the 955 agenda. This meeting, including audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to the viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page. In the event, we have to end this hearing due to technical difficulties. We'll reconvene at 2:15 today in this room. A public notice will be posted. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to our website. You will find a link on the status page for that measure. Okay, so for the 955 agenda, House Bill 919, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt LRB tech amendments.
You're considering previous action.
So this is a bill that we had passed before, but because it was an HD1, it'll go straight to the governor, so we have to add some amendments so that they can go to conference. So we're reconsidering previous action, which is not on the...
It is, it is.
And we'll amend to include LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair votes.
Vice Chair votes, I sent to English.
Aye.
Senator Noe.
Aye.
Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Tidani.
Aye.
Senator Morawaki.
Aye.
Senator Taniguchi.
Aye.
Senator Wakai.
Yes.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Recommendations adopted, Senator Shumakro is excused.
Okay, thank you. Adjourn, and then if we can go to the breakout room. Okay, calling to order the 10 a.m. Ways and Means hearing. First item is House Bill 515. We have Catherine Payne from Board of Education.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Chair Dela Cruz, Vice Chair Keith Agarone, and members of the committee. The Board of Education opposes this bill, which would require the Board to prioritize candidates for the superintendent of education position with certain minimum qualifications and establish a desired qualification. The Board opposes proposed legislation that restricts its ability to hire and effectively manage and oversee the superintendent. The Board respectfully disagrees with both content and principle of this measure. This is essentially the legislature dictating a management function over which the Board clearly has authority and responsibility as envisioned by the state constitution. Further, while requiring superintendent candidates to have at least 10 years of experience in the Department of Education, this would not have prevented the Board from hiring its current superintendent, but it would have prevented the hiring of previous long-serving superintendents and limits the candidate pool for a position that already has a difficult time recruiting strong candidates. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Members, any questions? Thank you.
Any questions, Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I understand the situation, but you know, when I did my somewhat off the record on the record on investigation, the procurative superintendent that we have wasn't even the first candidate chosen. So I just was wondering why, she wasn't the first or the second candidate, but she's still got the position. So you're talking about that this would be something that would be going to have a requirement. Why shouldn't our state have that kind of requirement? It should have somebody be able to relate to our way of life, having at least a teaching position in the school, coming from the DOE, being a principal. So why shouldn't we have somebody that's working in our system now and having that as a category because everything else had failed before that? So this is the reason why we're in a situation that we is now. No relation, because she never taught in a classroom, she was never a principal or vice principal. So how she's going to relate? I don't expect to believe if we don't have these categories in there.
Thank you, Senator. I certainly don't disagree that it's very important to have a candidate who understands Hawaii and is deeply embedded in the values of the community that we all share. I don't disagree with you there. It's the principle of the Board has constitutionally given this responsibility. I was not around when the superintendent was selected. My understanding is that the committee identified two candidates that were publicly vetted and went around and talked to groups, and one was selected from those two, and that is the one that we have. So I'm not familiar with the off-the-record research that you referenced, because my understanding, although I wasn't part of it, is that two candidates were in the final category and one was selected.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I have a question.
Senator Morawaki.
Yeah, Chair Payne, does the BOE have minimum qualifications and desired qualifications that you look at? Some criteria by which you select the superintendent?
The... Yes, and currently we have a group that is developing those on the Board. Each time a new superintendent is sought, different qualifications may be needed, so that is developed.
So each time you select different criteria, and there's no consistent criteria or criterion to look at whether, as this bill requires, that there be, since they are administering a huge system, that they have administrative experience as a principal in a school and understanding how we operate in terms of the criteria system? You have something like that in your criteria now?
We are developing the criteria, and those are very high priorities for Board members, yes.
But you don't have it now in...
We do not have set criteria from superintendent search to superintendent search. There are standards for leadership, superintendent leadership, national standards and expectations, but the Board develops the criteria each time a selection is made, and this is my first time doing that, so we are setting that criteria now.
So there's no consistent criteria that the Board uses that looks at administrative experience, which you know is critical in terms of having principal experience?
There is no set criteria that is in policy.
Thank you, Chair.
Senator Keith Agarone.
Yes, thank you. What's the basis for your statement that constitutionally we don't have the authority to pass this kind of bill? I mean, the Constitution's...
That was not my statement.
Well, it sounded like it.
Well, let me reread it again for you. It says that the Constitution gives the Board the authority to hire the superintendent.
As provided by law.
As provided by law, and that's the legislature. So a little misleading in that testimony.
Well, I apologize for being misleading, and certainly...
Is this the position of the entire Board?
This is the position of the Board.
Okay, thank you.
We set our policy positions, and we only testify on policy positions that are...
I don't have a question.
...by the Board prior to the legislative session, and this was one of our policy positions approved by the Board, yes.
Thank you. We don't have any testimony from the Attorney General that affirms that statement, though, because the way I would share the Vice Chair's read of Section 3, because it does say "as provided by law," to formulate educational policy and appoint the superintendent of the chief of education as chief executive officer, which means a bill has to be passed.
Good Chair. Yeah, and I would also like to just qualify that by saying, what this bill is saying is that notwithstanding any law to the contrary, we're asking the Board to prioritize candidates that have the minimum qualifications to look at these other things, having you know the years of service in a tri-level system, which is what Hawaii has. And many of the mainland states do not have that kind. You know, we are the only state with a single system, and this is what makes it difficult, that if you don't have the kind of experience in a system like the Hawaii DOE, it's difficult to expect a superintendent to have that kind of level of understanding. So that's the purpose of this. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I would also share that maybe in other jurisdictions, school boards are able to raise their own taxes, or they get county taxes, so unless you're a part of the... unless you have local experience, you don't realize that your funding comes from the state and that the legislature appropriates the funding, which makes it difficult, I think, for a superintendent to come in from out of state, because they're not realizing that it's a whole different system on how you appropriate funds for education. Farm Bureau?
Morning, Chair Dela Cruz, Vice Chair Keith Agarone, members of the committee, Brian Yomor here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. The Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony supporting Part 1 of this measure. We take no position on Part 2. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Ulupono.
Morning, Chair Dela Cruz, Vice Chair Keith Agarone, members of the committee, Micah Munikata here on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative, similar to the last testifier. We support Part 1 of this measure and take no position on Part 2. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, next is House Bill 541. State Fire Council.
Yeah, Chair, Lauren Rogers, representing State Fire Council. Our testimony is for Part 3, and it's to have licensing for people who do not work on an ambulance, but respond to medical emergencies, and they are certified by National Registry. We believe that this licensure by DCCA is necessary, especially when you have to recertify people that are responding, you want to have some oversight over them. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. DHS? Doctor, Department of Health?
Good morning, Chair Dela Cruz, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Lauren Kim testifying on behalf of the Department of Health on HB 541, SD 2 proposed. The Department is in strong support of Part 1 and Part 2. Thank you for hearing this measure, and we stand by for questions. The Department takes no position on Part 3 and defer to DCCA.
Thank you. Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Good morning, Chair Dela Cruz and members of the committee. I'm Michelle Nakata, Deputy Attorney General. The Department of the Attorney General provides the following comments on this measure. In Part 1, the purpose of the bill is to amend Act 263 to modify the responsibilities of the working group, to identify gaps in services, coordinate funding sources, and establish and identify outcome measures for behavioral health, substance abuse, and homelessness. This bill may be subject to constitutional challenge. Section 1 of this bill would require the working group to identify the gaps in services and outcome measures for behavioral health, substance abuse, and homelessness. The title of this bill, however, is relating to health. Section 14 of Article 3 of the state constitution provides that each law shall embrace but one subject, which shall be expressed in its title. As presently described, homelessness services are not appropriately described as relating to health. To avoid a potential constitutional challenge on this issue, we recommend that Section 1 of the proposed SD 2 bill be amended to treat homelessness as a result of behavioral health or substance abuse issues instead of as a separate issue. We have provided suggested amended language in our written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning, and I will be available for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. AMR?
Yeah, good morning, Chair Dela Cruz, Vice Chair Agarone, Speedy Bailey, I'm Regional Director for American Medical Response in Hawaii. We support Section 2 of this bill, which provides essential funding for EMS services statewide. These monies are essential to continue the services that are being currently provided today. This pays for ambulances, cardiac monitors, ventilators, medications that we carry, and to continue services, and I mean it as we are providing today. These are monies to provide for the services that are moment-to-moment life-saving. You know, we provide at AMR a sustainable model of EMS in collaboration with the state of Hawaii. We've provided services for over 40 years, on time, on point, which means we're accountable to the state and on budget. I'm very proud of this. We appreciate the support from WAM and the Senate for putting these monies into this bill. It's essential. The Hawaii state system works. We're very proud to be part of that. With respect to Section 3, I just want to comment, and I do appreciate the fire department's desire to be licensed. They are an essential part of the EMS system in Hawaii. I would just like to caution that the language in the bill creates sort of unintended consequences, because we're not just talking about the fire department. We're talking about a system in the state of Hawaii, and there are unlicensed providers that will be taking advantage of this type of licensure. There's no doubt, there's no question about what the fire services deliver on a daily basis, but we are just concerned that this language doesn't fully vet the unintended consequences. And we also believe that in Bill 1340, there is a mechanism to license first responders. We also believe there's a mechanism to work with the DCCA and provide a scope of practice for the fire services to provide these services statewide. Mahalo for your time, thank you.
Thank you. DCCA?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair Lonnie Kioki, Executive Officer of the Hawaii Medical Board. The Board will stand on its written testimony, providing comments and requesting amendments to Section 4 of the bill, Part 3, Section 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last item, House Bill 766, Department of Transportation.
Good morning, Chair Dela Cruz, Vice Chair Keith Agarone, and distinguished members of the Ways and Means Committee, on behalf of DOT, Jade Putai. We stand on our testimony in support with amendments. Traffic safety is not just a slogan, but a top priority for the DOT, so we are constantly striving to find new solutions to help our efforts and meet our vision zero goal. Thank you very much for scheduling this hearing.
Okay. Are you speaking for all the DOT testifiers? If not, Lee Nagano?
Yes, she's my subject matter expert, Chair.
Oh, okay. Okay, so Lee, you're only available for questions, or did you want to say something?
Just available for questions.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, so that concludes all the approved testifiers. Senator Morawaki, you had a question?
Yes, Jade, DOT on this last bill, we note that the AG had some concerns about the language, and I just wondered whether you got any kind of that from... I think it was your testimony that said you were checking with the AG on the method of financing the fees. Have you gotten any language that we could insert in here to ensure that this is a good bill?
Thank you, Senator, for the question. If you don't mind, Lee, can you answer the question?
Hi, yes, we are working with Attorney General's office, and they did follow up with additional questions yesterday, and we responded to their additional questions and are waiting further guidance.
So is the language... Are we going to get some kind of language, or is this bill okay as it is?
We believe it is okay as it is.
But, so, just for your information, we'll defect the date so that as... to just clarify things so that we can still take it up in conference.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
I have a question, sorry.
Senator Noe.
Yes, I didn't bring this up, but it just kind of dawns on me that what kind of impact fees... Who would you assess the impact fees to? Would it be developers in an area, or have you reached that point yet in discussions?
Assessment fee, yeah.
Yes, to assess and collect impact fees. I was wondering if the discussion has been ongoing still.
The fees for the pilot... the two-year pilot program would come from the Highway Safety Fund.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Senator Morawaki.
I have one more question, but going back to HB 541, I think it was Mr. Bailey who said that EMT licensing, so if we can get fire department back on, on that Part 3, Section 4...
You want to go back?
Yeah.
Which bill is that?
Yeah, 541.
Okay, okay.
Part of the agenda.
Wait, wait, let's finish 766.
Okay, sorry.
So any other questions for the department on the 766? Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if he's still on.
Oh, he's gone? Okay, if he's still on, because that was a question on...
Is State Fire Council still on?
Yeah, Lauren Rogers is here.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can you address that?
I don't think he heard your question.
Okay, the question... Mr. Bailey, if he's still on, he said that your section on licensing the EMTs might have unintended consequences. I wanted to make sure that we're not licensing others than what you had expected to be licensed under this part.
Yeah, I think I can best answer that, and you may have mentioned it. Senate Bill 1340 has specific language that would add in a section for people who... first responders who tend to work on an ambulance. That just passed House Finance, I believe, on Wednesday. So not being sure of that being moved forward, we wanted to have this bill also available to get this addressed.
Chair, can I... I see Mr. Bailey on... Can you clarify why you think that would have unintended consequences if we pass this section of the bill? You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, I apologize. Had to take a phone call in the middle of that, I apologize. But yes, you know, as a system, the state is responsible for regulations of ambulance currently, it's well documented. But if you start licensing people in the state of Hawaii, and I'm not just talking about the fire department, but there are every other national registered EMT that comes to Hawaii currently, and some of them set up shop here, unknowing that their level of services do not meet the state requirements. So these are people that are living outside of our state system, they're providing services, they're coming to people and saying, "I'm an EMT, I'm an EMT, I'm a medic," so forth. And that's not clear... It's clear when the fire department says, "We have these people, and this is what they do." It's just not clear in the rest of the system outside of 911, when people are operating in this kind of capacity. And that's sort of the unlicensed providers of these kinds of services that go on, and I don't think the state has the wherewithal to regulate them. They certainly don't have manpower to regulate them, but it creates unintended consequences if these guys reporting that they can do these kinds of services, not under the guidance or correct licensure to provide those services to the public. Does that help?
Well, it says that DCCA will be looking at licensing, so there is some kind of review, not just everybody that has a license of any kind can practice here. So I may have looked at Sections 4. Thank you. I think the fire department would like to see something like this. At least DCCA can monitor it.
I... Thank you. I believe they can monitor the fire department, you just have to really monitor the people that aren't licensed to provide services, like a fire department or an ambulance service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We're going to recess for decision-making. First item, House Bill 515, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt the proposed SD 2, and adopt LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair votes.
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 541, recommendation is to adopt the proposed SD 2, also adopt LRB tech amendments, adopt language from the Attorney General's testimony to ensure the constitutionality of the measure, and also adopt language from OHA to more accurately reflect their existing administrative structure. We'll defect the date to 2050, and in the committee report, we'll note the Hawaii Medical Board's testimony in regards to Part 3, Section 4, and ask the conference committee to examine that language. Any discussion? If not, chair votes.
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item, House Bill 766, recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopt the proposed SD 2, also adopt LRB tech amendments, and adopt language from DOT's testimony to appropriate $2 million out of the state highway fund, at least from DOT's written testimony, for fiscal year 2021, $400,000 for fiscal year 2122, $400,000... $400,000 for fiscal year 2223. So it's going to be $2 million, then $400,000, $400,000. Okay, any discussion? If not, chair votes aye.
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, so I'll adjourn, and then we'll go back to our 950 agenda. Okay, calling to order the 950 decision making and a notice of hearing. House Bill 204. So first testifier is Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Good morning.
Good morning. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Mahalo for your reconsideration of our budget bill. We are asking for your consideration of the following amendments to help OHA best serve our beneficiaries during these difficult times. First amendment to allow OHA's CLA report, a $500,000 independent review of five years of OHA contracts and disbursements paid out of OHA's trust funds to be used to substitute for the state audit required by our previous budget act. The inability of the state auditor to complete the audit has prevented OHA from receiving its second year of general funds from the last biennium. In addition, a housekeeping amendment is requested to ensure these funds don't lapse. Secondly, an additional $200,000 to fund a new follow-up review to that CLA report to ensure transparency and accountability on behalf of OHA. Mahalo Nui for your reconsideration of this request. And we are available for questions. Online with me is our CEO Sylvia Hasi and our Chief Advocacy Officer Sterling Wong.
Thank you, members, any questions? No questions, thank you. And thank you for all your guys' hard work in working with the committee to get the information we need.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other... If there are no questions, then we're going to recess for decision making. Okay. Reconvening for decision making on House Bill 204. So recommendation is going to be to adopt the proposed SD2, and also to include language from OHA's supplementary or supplemental testimony in regards to the CLA contract and disbursement review, and in regards to the $200,000 for the follow-up audit. Any discussion? Okay, and then we'll include any technical amendments as necessary. Okay? If no discussion, chair votes aye.
Okay, with all members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you, adjourned.
We did 911, not 919. We did...
Now we bring 910, oh, 1010. Okay, so calling to order... Calling to order the 1010 agenda. Okay, the first item is House Bill 552. So recommendation is to adopt LRB tech amendments, include language from the chief procurement officer's testimony, streamline the code so all requirements are in a single section pertaining to that specific subject rather than being in multiple sections of the code. Take from HSEO's testimony, amending definitions to be consistent with the Code of Federal Regulations. We'll also take from Office of Planning's testimony, page 4, lines 14 to 17. A meant-to-read state and county agencies may include trees and plants with lifespans longer than 20 years as part of its capital improvement projects to meet the goals of reducing its carbon footprint and in meeting the state's decarbonization and sustainability goals. Page 13, lines 5 to 9, amend to read green infrastructure means the range of measures that use plant, tree, or soil systems, permeable pavement, or other permeable surfaces, or substrates, storm water, harvest, and reuse, or landscaping to store infiltrate or evapotranspirate water with expected lifespan of at least 20 years designed to reduce carbon footprint temperatures, urban heat, island temperatures, and storm water flow to sewer systems or surface waters to meet the state's climate and sustainability goals. Okay, any discussion? If not, chair votes aye.
Okay, with nine members... With 10 members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Next item. House Bill 558, recommendation is to pass with LRB tech amendments. Any discussion? Not chair votes aye.
Okay, with 10 members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Okay, adjourned. And then calling the 1015 agenda to order. Okay, House Bill 424 already has a defective date, so recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion?
Okay, with 10 members present, any reservations? Any opposition? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. CPN, it's a joint. I'm sorry.
Senator, I will do the countdown.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay, ready in five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, calling to order the 1030 AM joint hearing, Ways and Means Commerce and Consumer Protection. First item is House Bill 862. Okay, we have PUC.
Good morning, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. You have our written testimony in support of the measure available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Thank you. Hawaii Tourism Authority.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, and both Vice Chairs and members, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is John McFreeze, President of the Hawaii Tourism Authority. In addition to our testimony, which we stand by, I would just like to add that, like yourselves, I might... I too am surprised by the extent of the opposition, which I'm told totals something around 201. I would give that serious thought. I felt when... And my team here at HTA, when we read the bill, felt like we were trying to fix something that was not broken. And when we commit ourselves to doing that, the prerequisite becomes we have to break it. Instead, we could collaborate and improve upon it and ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions? No questions. Rick Freeze? Rick Freeze?
Okay, thanks very much. I submitted written testimony. Thank you all, I'll be very fast. I want to cover four points. Mostly, and I think Senator Rikai has the best interests of the state at heart, but, for example, he was in the paper today criticizing us for spending $250,000 for the Hawaiian dance and music. That's a statutory requirement that we put away a million a year. That money cannot be spent elsewhere. And there was a great opportunity to get going on the virtual music and dance. Number two, there was discussion about our wanting to become... Shed some light on the spending practices of HTA. I've been there now seven years and elected four straight years as board chair.
Thank you.
And I can say... Hello?
Yeah, thank you.
Can I keep going, or...
Unless a member has a question, everyone's limited to one.
Okay, because I had four points I thought were quite important to cover.
Does anybody have a question? Okay, thank you. University of Hawaii.
Good morning, Senator... Chair Dela Cruz, Chair Baker, respective Vice Chairs. Calling for the University of Hawaii at Hilo. We stand in support of our written testimony that is in support of Section 1 of HB 862. We also ask, request that, should Pisces transferred to UH Hilo, that the bill be amended to remove Emilio Astronomy Center as the unit in which Pisces is housed, so that it can be housed under the... To provide flexibility for the university to determine where it sits.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay. Pacific International Space Center for Exploration.
Hello, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committees. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony this morning. I would like to begin by saying that the entire Pisces team, after learning from very sad news, joins the community of the Big Island in the mourning of Kalipahai Bani, a truly remarkable member of the community who passed away last night and will be greatly missed. With respect to bill HB 862-H2, proposed draft SD2, we stand in support of our testimony supporting the part of the bill pertaining to Pisces, and would like to request the committees to consider passing version HB 862-HD2 as the one instead. Mahalo, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Legacy Re-Foundation.
Do you refound? And we have actually received grants from HTA, and we're very appreciative of the fact they've been able to do that. Our concern with this bill passing is that that may impede our progress in the future and other nonprofits and businesses that rely on this. We've had several thousand children go through our educational center out there, and we are concerned that this may impact our ability to continue doing so. So we are not in support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Halau, mahalo ilima.
Elina mai kialoha kakoa, ova iho no omapuanadi silva. I am here as a native Hawaiian, culturally grounded kumuhula. And my presence here today clearly demonstrates my strong and unwavering opposition to HB 862-HD2, SD2 proposed. I stand on my testimony as has been submitted. Na uno kalahuie, ayala.
Thank you. Viki Ho Takamine.
Halau mai kakoa, thank you for the opportunity to express my strong opposition to this bill. I understand that amendments will be made, but I really feel we've been working 20 years with the Hawaii Tourism Authority and have gotten strong support from them for our support of Hawaiian culture and our natural and cultural resources. The tourism industry cannot just market our culture. This is cultural appropriation. Giving back to our culture and our natural resources is critical. We've worked for years to increase the funding for Hawaiian culture and practice, not just Hawaiian culture, but the community. And so, funding is critical. To just appropriate funding for sports and the sports activities is unacceptable. We've worked for 20 years. The Foundation Culture and Yes has not really given the kind of support that HTA has to native Hawaiian culture, our natural and cultural resources. So stop the theft of Hawaiian culture and give back the aloha to our people and our community. Mahalo.
Thank you. Kona Kohala Chamber of Commerce.
Aloha, my name is Wendy Laros, and I'm the President and CEO of the Kona Kohala Chamber of Commerce. Our chamber strongly opposes HB 862 as proposed in Senate Draft 2. With nearly 500 members, our organization represents the business community in the Kona and Kohala districts on the west side of Hawaii Island. The visitor industry is the region's main economic driver, and we support initiatives that promote responsible tourism and sustainable growth. We know firsthand the important role of Hawaii Tourism Authority and what it plays in supporting Hawaii visitors' industry on Hawaii Island. This includes promoting cultural and natural resources, strengthening communities, and providing a cohesive marketing message to the world. Economic recovery is dependent on rebuilding our visitor industry. This is simply not the time to change the course and pull support from the Hawaii Tourism Authority. Please do not pass HB 862 as proposed in this draft.
Thank you. LeMomi Khan.
Not present, Senator.
John Barlow.
Okay, you got me? Okay. Aloha, Commerce Committee. Please, I would like for you not to omit language in HB 862, or how can you justify not committing any portion of hotel tax to benefit Hawaiian culture? The fact that the Hawaiian lands were taken illegally, there has never been any restitution offered to the people. Sure, Kakao was surrendered, and that was after it's been dumped on, and homeless are making encampments and other issues. We wouldn't have the number of homeless islanders that we do if it weren't for tourists that evolved into FITs buying up the land for their vacation rentals and foreign corporations building hotels and businesses without compensation for the Hawaiian lands they violated. It's bad enough that the capital improvements are spent on those vigorous that come from the mainland to take advantage of programs.
Thank you. Okay, so there's no more testifiers online. There are testimonies, so if you want to read the testimony, please go to our website. And we'll recess and return at 2:15 in this room for decision making. Okay, calling to order the decision making on House Bill 862. So recommendation will be to pass with amendments. We'll be adopting the proposed SD2 with the further following amendments. We'll adopt LRB tech amendments. In relating to Part 1 regarding the Pisces reorg, we'll amend to reestablish Pisces under the University of Hawaii at Hilo for administrative purposes. Relating to Part 3, we'll amend to reestablish the existing Culture and Arts Foundation of the HTA under the State Foundation of Culture and Arts. We'll reestablish the three Hawaiian culture positions, the Director of Hawaii... We'll reestablish the three Hawaiian culture positions, the Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs and Natural Resources, and two program specialists currently under HTA, under the State Foundation of Culture and Arts, for the management of these programs. We'll appropriate $3.7 million from the general fund to cover the existing grant programs perpetuating Hawaiian culture and community requirements and events. We'll also include the $350,000 to be used to cover the positions and salaries and fringe. And we'll also include $4 million in HTA's budget for sporting events. And we'll also mandate that HTA and its contractors work with the State Foundation of Culture and Arts as a resource to assist with HTA's efforts in marketing to the visitor industry to ensure marketing is culturally sensitive. I think that's everything. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So earlier you had appropriated the $2 million for the Hawaiian culture. So it's plus 3.7?
No, it's going to be total 3.7. So we're including the $2 million, $50,000, and the $1.7 million for community.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have something I wanted to say.
Okay.
I just, this was, and I called you earlier, I just, it's not that I disagree with some of the things that HTA, and I require more transparency and oversight, but I'm just not feeling too good about TAT funding mechanism was actually a contact fee for the marketing purposes of HTA. So by making the HTA go to general funds, I just, I guess I kind of agree on, you know, what was the TAT at front?
What bill was that, though?
Are you hearing? A little bit?
Yeah, I think you're referring to House Bill 321, though. So that bill was the one that scooped the TAT and redistributed TAT to general fund, and then enabled the counties to create their own surcharge.
Okay, thank you, darling.
Senator Wakai.
But this bill removes the 79 million from TAT, right, and makes them now come to the general fund.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Senator Wakai, can you be louder? I'd like to hear your comments.
Okay, so he's clarifying that this does take the 79 million, but we, the budget already, the budget that we passed puts HTA on ARPA funds. So what this bill does is complies with the budget bill that we passed, plus the bill that will add the surcharge. Okay, go ahead.
But it's moving them from TAT special funds in the future to be general funded, which I think is prudent, because we need to hold HTA accountable. The EET members were able to have multiple budget discussions with John DeFreeze and his staff, and we saw recurring mismanagement of the budget, and the spending that they are putting forward on marketing Hawaii, particularly to the Asian markets, are paying very little dividends. I mean, for example, for the Japanese market back in 2019, we paid about $5.70 per Japanese tourist. As of February of this year, we're now paying $244 per Japanese tourist, and I think the spending there is misaligned, and they're not having any regard for the return on investment. So to your commentary, Senator Favella, moving them from special funds where they can just do whatever they want and continue to do as they please, and making them now general funded, holds them accountable to us and to the taxpayers to make sure that they're spending our appropriation wisely. And to Senator Dela Cruz's point about some of the cultural groups that are seeing some level of anxiety to this bill, I also will remind those who are big proponents of perpetuating culture that the remaining $48 million or so that's earmarked for HTA in the future, those can be used in the marketing budget to directly fund festivals such as Merry Monarch, such as King Kamameja celebration, Prince Lautuula Festival, FestPak. So it's not as if HTA and its marketing budget can no longer be utilized to promote those types of events. We just have to make sure that there is a clear nexus between a cultural event and HTA's marketing. So thank you to Senator Dela Cruz and his wonderful staff for putting all the brain power into making this bill even better for us, Chair.
Okay, any other discussion? So this bill actually had a lot of hands in it. You know, I want to thank all the subject matter chairs who worked hard on a lot of the reorgs. This is why it's actually referred Ways and Means CPN, because there's a major reorg that helps the PUC function better. So I want to thank all the subject matter chairs for all their hard work. So if, no further discussion, chair votes, aye.
Okay, the Committee on Ways and Means, Chair's recommendation on HB 862, House Draft 2, Senate Draft 1, is to pass with amendments. Okay, Chair goes aye. Vice Chair Agarwal?
Yes.
Senator English?
Aye.
Senator, I, okay, I go, I'll vote aye. Senator Kanuha? Excuse?
Yeah.
Okay, Senator Kidani? Excuse? Senator Moriwaki?
Aye.
Senator Shimabukuro? Excuse?
Yeah.
Okay. Senator Taniguchi?
Aye.
Senator Wakai?
Yes.
And Senator Favella?
No.
Okay, measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for CPN, pass with amendments, chair votes, aye.
Vice Chair Chang?
Aye.
Senator Missalucha?
Aye.
Nisha Argo's aye. Senator Revere?
Aye.
Senator Sampa and Frantura? Oh, she did, okay. Senator Favella? Okay, motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, adjourned.